We're going to have an invocation. And we're also going to have the pledge. And then we'll start the regular meeting. I don't see anybody designated here for the invocation. And I don't see a preacher in the crowd. So I guess that means unless I have a volunteer.
You can.
Let's all just gather.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's bow together. This invocation tonight is given for the benefit of the council. If you don't want to participate, it's fine. We invite individuals from all members of the clergy or the community to come and ask these invocations. Let's pray together. Our Father, as we've come together tonight, this first meeting of this new year 2014, we thank you for the blessings and all the things we were able to accomplish in 2013. God, we ask that you be with each council person tonight, that they might do what's best for the majority of the people of this community, forgetting our own interests and forgetting our own personal feelings and thoughts, but just what's best for our community. God, we ask that you give us the wisdom and the knowledge to move forward, that this meeting has begun in peace, let it end in harmony. And we ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
According to the meeting's order, the first thing I'll ask is if everybody would please turn their cell phones on silent or vibrate or whatever you can do. And the second thing I'll ask is if Julie will call the roll call.
Councilwoman Rish?
Present.
Councilman Weber?
Present.
Councilwoman Shomel?
Present.
Councilman Nobby?
Here.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Present.
Councilman Creech?
Present.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Present.
All council people are present. We have a quorum and we can do business. We welcome all of you folks that have come out on this wonderful evening. I didn't think it was supposed to snow, but it did. And we welcome you out here tonight. This isn't going to be a real long meeting. It's the first meeting of the year. We don't have a lot of transfers or a lot of things to do, but we do have a lot of important issues since it is the first meeting of the year that had to be postponed from last Monday. So I welcome you. First agenda will be the reading of the minutes of the December 16th regular meeting of the city council.
I move the minutes to be accepted as presented. Second.
We have a motion to approve the minutes as they were sent out to the council people. Are there any additions or corrections? None appearing, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. This being the first meeting of the year, I must hand the gavel to the council president who will conduct the elections for 2014. Mr. President, the gavel is yours.
Thank you very much. Okay, nominations for city council president. Do we have any nominations, please?
Can we trick anybody? Anybody would like to be?
Dave, do you have any nominations?
Mr. Shomel?
Yes.
I've asked you before about being council president and you'd kind of shied away because you're on the Board of Public Works. Would you like to be nominated? Would you accept the nomination if I nominated you?
Yes.
I would like to make that nomination, not whoever.
Okay, nomination for Fran Shomel. Anybody else? Okay, that's the only one we have. Hit the gavel, don't I? I'm going to. Okay, so should we take a roll call vote on that?
You should have a second.
It is.
Oh, yeah, that's clear. Second it.
I'll second.
Okay, sorry. Now let's vote.
Roll call vote?
I would.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Shomel?
I'll abstain.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creech?
Oh, yeah.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
Okay, congratulations. Oh, thank you. Thank you. It's a tough job. I've done it. Okay. And for city council vice president, do we have nominations, please?
The proper order now is to hand the gavel to Mr. Shomel.
Oh. I'm done.
You've got to throw up. We're done. You're out of here.
Sorry, man. It's all yours. That's cool. Okay.
Nomination for vice president?
Yeah. I nominate Tom.
Tom, will you accept the nomination as vice president?
I gave my thank you, but I've done that for two years and I would like to see one of the young, one of the young individuals jump right in there.
Then I'll nominate Debbie Montgomery.
Second.
There you go.
We have a nomination for Debbie Montgomery as vice president of the council for 2014. Any other nominations? Will someone move the nominations to be closed?
Some move.
Second.
Second.
Nominations are closed. Let's vote for vice president. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
I thought they wanted somebody young.
Councilman Creech?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
Okay, Debbie Montgomery, your name has been selected as vice president of the Congress City Council for the year 2014.
While you got the gavel, Mr. President, why don't you just go ahead with your appointments?
I don't have any appointments. Does someone have appointments?
If you've got appointments, they're in your, they're in your packet.
Okay.
And I have picked up a couple for you today.
Good for the 911 advisory board, one appointment, one year term. Nancy Stevens currently. Nancy, will you accept it for another year or for the council's representative on the E-911 advisory board?
Yes.
We'd like to vote on that. Nancy?
We had one meeting last week.
You'll have...
Fran, can we take all these if everybody?
Yeah, I guess we could.
Can we do that?
You can unless somebody wants a particular office, then you have to.
Fran, can you rule him out of order?
Yes.
Dave, would you handcuff him?
Sheriff's law.
Can we do that, Fran, if everybody?
I believe, Mr. Baker, can we do that?
Sure, unless someone objects.
To expedite?
Okay.
Okay.
I'll read the appointments here. Fayette County Economic Development Board, city council member, one year term currently, Debbie Montgomery. Debbie, are you willing to continue that?
Thank you.
Fayette County First Day Unit Review Committee, one appointment from city council. I've been serving on that and I will continue if no one else wants it. Tax Abatement Committee, the president by virtue of the office will serve on that. The Redevelopment Commission, two appointments, one year term. Reappointment, Tom Beck. And I understand we need a replacement for Terry Sturgeon who has moved. Do you have one, Your Honor?
If you guys want him, let's see, I got it right down here. Dick O'Neil.
Dick O'Neil is willing to serve. Anyone have any, anyone else they'd like for any of these appointments? If not, we can vote on them. Roll call vote, please, for these appointments. One, two, three, four, actually five with the Tax Abatement Committee.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creech?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens?
I continue. That concludes the appointments.
Takes care of you, sir. I have a mayoral appointment. Airport Board, I have an appointment open and Tim Patterson is expired and I'm reappointing him. I've checked with him. He'll accept it. On the Board of Works, it'll be Fran Shomel, Mike Bishop, Jane Oakley, and Ronnie Coldiron for another year, with Fran being the chairman of the board. Annexation Committee, we have three appointments on there and I have appointed Connie, Gary, and Tom, if it's okay. The Cable Board is Mel Deely, Leota King, Fran Shomel, Joe Galway, myself by virtue of the office, Melissa by virtue of the office, and Chris Craig. Community Correction, the mayor serves on that or his proxy by virtue of the office. Community Development, the mayor serves by virtue of the office or his appointment. Congress Re-Development Commission, I appoint Joe Galway, Carol Hunter, and Gerald Holmes. They served the first year on there and done a great job and will continue. Emergency 911, the mayoral appointment for the Board of Works member will be Fran. And Fayette County Alcoholic Beverage Commission will be George Morris. The Fayette County Economic Development Corporation, the mayor serves by virtue of the office. And the Finance Committee, all members appointed by the mayor, which will be Fran Shomel, Julie Griesen, the mayor, Gabe Nobby, and the president of the council, which in this case is Fran. The Tax Abatement Committee will be the mayor or appointee, Julie, Diana, and the president of the city council. The Tourism Committee for this next year, and I believe it's a three-year, two-year term, Donna or three, two?
I don't know.
I forget what it is. Anyway, the new appointments will be Deana Barrett, I've checked with her. Mike Stevens is a holdover, he's already on there, and Donna Schroeder will be a new member. That's the three by the city and there'll be two by the county. I have an appointment to the Area Planning Commission, that's from the mayor, and I'm appointing Dick O'Neil. He has agreed today to serve on there. And I think all of you council people know it's getting tougher and tougher to get people to commit to serve a year or two on these different boards, especially when they don't pay. And the Redevelopment Board is one of those that has to meet every month and they don't get paid for it. So I appreciate anybody that's serving. We took that backwards, but we got it done. Resolution 2014-01, police reimbursement, telephone 38250. Money coming back, shouldn't be a problem. Yeah, we can take Resolution 2014-02, damage on the Dodge Ram, $4,214.95 coming back to the insurance. We take both those D and E together if it's okay with you.
Mr. Mayor, would you like a motion?
Yes.
I think Connie wants to make it.
I move that we accept Resolution 2014-01 and 02.
Take it.
Okay, so any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Pending ordinance 3099, additional appropriation of tax abatement public hearing. This is $300 for publication of legal notices and $500 for other equipment. And why do we have to do that so early in the year?
We can get it out of the way so that we have the money appropriated from the notice that we can do.
Because this is an additional appropriation, I need to open a public hearing and let the public discuss it. Is there any discussion? Anybody at all want to discuss those two issues?
I believe Julie, when we do have to have the publication, they pay for it eventually, don't they?
Yeah.
We are reimbursed for it.
Yes.
So 300 for the publication and then 500 for other equipment. What's that?
Just if they need some other equipment, some other kind of office supply equipment in the office. Diana's office handles those.
Anybody? None appearing, I'm going to close the public hearing. Give it to the council for a decision.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move a second pending ordinance 3099.
Second.
I have a motion to accept pending ordinance 3099 on first reading. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Would you like to suspend the rules and continue?
Some move.
Second.
Got a motion to suspend the rules and consider pending ordinance 3099 on third and final reading. Is there any discussion about suspending rules? On suspension of rules only, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Would you like to move forward?
Some move.
Got a motion to consider pending ordinance 3099 on third and final reading. An additional appropriation of 300, publication of legal notices, and 500 for other equipment on the third and final reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We have a like ordinance pending, ordinance 3100. This is an additional appropriation from the riverboat, $12,300. This is for demolition of the property on West 8th Street and I would like to open a public hearing on that issue. That issue is open at this point. Is there anybody in the room that would be for it, against it, or just like to speak about it?
Just for clarity, this is just a tear down, right?
Yes.
Right. And I thought that was 15-5.
14-3.
14. Well, it's 12-3 on here.
12-3.
That's what it was. It's 12-3. Has the decision still not been made on exactly how we're going to do that, whether we're going to hire somebody?
I put another bid in your packets. Did you get them? I had a bid for that Mr. Spivey.
No, we didn't.
Yes, you should have.
Nope.
Yeah, I've got, I'm sorry, I thought I put that in there. I have another bid for Mr. Spivey. I got him, but I didn't pass him out. He will take it, sit down and clean it up for this amount of money. I don't know if you're interested in that. We were, for the 14-3, we were going to have him knock it down and we have to clean up the mess. Still, public hearing.
You have one for Mr. Baker? You share with the...
You got an extra one down there?
Give me, I can share.
Okay. He turned this in late in the day that he would do the whole job for $25,000.
Yeah, thank you.
The other was to lay it on the ground and then the city, as we had time, would clean it up.
Did we have an employee that could operate the machine?
I talked to him about that and he said if I told him that he had to do it, he would do it. He felt like it, he would have to go inside with some man on the top and bring that one wall down. Let me think now, it's the east wall.
Yes.
It's leaning, it's leaning so bad and there's a house within five or six foot of that. He wasn't fond of the idea, but if I told him that's what he had to do, he said he would try and do it, possibly want to be sure we have insurance. I think, I think he's capable.
Have we looked into the need for additional insurance?
Yeah, we can do that just for a week or 10 days at a time. We could put a rider on our policy.
Is it very expensive?
I believe the figure was like $130 or $140 a day.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes.
Got a question. In regards to tearing it down, it was, it was brought up before about removing a fence, make sure it wasn't damaged, and also an air conditioner unit. And I just wondered if that was in all that too?
No.
If he was going to do it himself or was he going to have some kind of a contractor do that?
The 14-3 includes everything. Lay it on the ground so we can clean it up.
Yeah, I was just concerned about the other part.
12-3, where do I get the 14-3? I'm sorry, 12-3.
So the 12-3 is?
Is to just put it on the ground.
Okay, 25 is complete.
I have a comment.
Yes, Nancy.
I believe that we should hire this done, all of it. And $25,000 is not that bad. That makes them totally responsible for everything. If anything happens, it's their responsibility. I can't see the 12-3 and then turn around and having to do it ourselves to clean it up, which we all know is going to take a long time. So I'm for the 25.
We would have to advertise for additional appropriation and to move to the 25.
It's all right. What was the other bid last time? I forget because it was for the same thing we're talking about here, which was called...
But it was the total job. We had to furnish the dump.
Yes, it was.
One was, yeah.
One was.
And it was right around that same amount, but I don't have the...
You got it, Julie?
25-480.
25-480 total cleaner?
Mm-hmm. And how much experience do these people have in doing that kind of work?
Well, we will not allow anybody to work until Mr. Baker approves their credentials, such as insurance, liability. They won't touch it. We're very careful about that. He would see that everything's in order before they ever move on it.
Right, we would have a contract and a lot, plenty of liability.
Is this with the dumpsters for us?
I think there's even a difference between having liability insurance and how much experience they've got with doing that kind of job. Because we've all discussed how difficult it's going to be.
I don't know these people. Dustin Reeves, I don't know. We're still under a public hearing. Is there anybody out there want to discuss this?
I believe like Nancy said, I think while I have it down, I don't think our city people ought to go away when we got them to do something else.
Okay. Are you in favor of doing it?
I'm in favor of what Nancy said.
Have you looked at it?
Yeah.
I noticed we have a neighbor there today. Ms. Brocklin, you live right behind it. Have you got a comment?
It looks pretty dangerous.
It is. It is.
I can look out my kitchen window and it, it has fallen down in places.
Is there anybody else out there that has a comment? None appearing, I'll close the public hearing and the council will let you discuss it. We have a ordinance before us to appropriate 12-3. It's been advertised and we can do that. If you want to change that and advertise again for the additional money, we can do that.
I move we advertise again for the additional money.
Okay, so you want to vote on this ordinance and then you want to have a public hearing next time for the additional money for 25-4 to do the total job?
Fine.
Question.
Is that a motion, Nancy?
No, we...
Yes.
Okay, that's in a motion. Is there a second to Nancy's motion?
Well, if we, if we through 12-3 tonight, we wouldn't have to advertise for 12...
Yeah, we have to advertise for the additional, yeah.
13, more. Would that be the way to go?
Yeah, we'll have to. If Nancy's motion passes, then we'll go back and pass this ordinance, this one that's pending.
Okay, sounds good.
We got a second, Nancy? Do we have a, who second it? We don't have a second.
I have a question.
Okay.
Okay, so for the 12-3, they're going to level it.
Just lay it on the ground.
Lay it on the ground.
The city employee would level it, yes.
No, city employee, no, let's hard out.
Let's hard out.
Well, that's right.
For the city employee, it could probably get done for about six, if I'm not mistaken. $5,000 for excavator.
Right, but I don't know if I'd try, I mean, it's...
Right, it's for the equipment, right.
Yeah. So 12-3, it levels the building, however, enough is removed. So then we have to get the dumpsters on and basically it's the whole building we're removing then. But do we have been wanting, just, okay, because I don't know, do we have the manpower to do that in relatively quick time because it'll become...
We have the manpower to do that over a period of time.
Well, we superior to time, because it'll be a place kids want to play and stuff. I mean, we're going to put a fence up, won't we?
No, we should be able to start moving it, especially this time of year when we don't have grass to mow.
So...
Now, if we got snow plow, then we can do it.
So cost wise, I mean, we have to rent the dumpsters and all, I mean, what, round about cost will cost?
About the same.
About the same?
Time we rent the dumpsters.
Wasn't it going to get separated, divided, and then not all of it hauled off or some of it taken down to the county?
That's hard to do, but that's what you should do. You should try to divide the brick from the...
That's what you said someone's going to do.
Is that what these people are going to do?
No.
No, if that, 12-3 goes, they're just going to lay it on the ground and we're going to try to do it.
Right, 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 right.
If the 25,000 guy, 25-4 like Nancy wants to do, he's going to do the whole job and leave it clean and flat.
I really don't care about the break. Is anybody else?
This is an ongoing problem and if we keep farming it out, it's going to continue to be an ongoing problem. The cheapest route is to have our guys do it. That's the cheapest route, period.
Well, I mean, he just said it wasn't. I'm just saying...
It's still the cheapest route because if, if we're paying 12-3 to have it torn down, we can tear it down for roughly six. That's $6,000 in savings. That's not including hauling it away, we just got to pay that. The cheapest route is to have our guys do it. I think that's where we should look at it.
But you're taking our people away from the jobs that they're supposed to be doing.
This, this could be one of their duties.
Well, yeah, but it's normally not their duties.
Well, we have, we all have things in our jobs where we don't normally do them, but sometimes we do.
I agree with that part. I just, I'm just a little concerned about men tearing it down. I mean, I mean, it's like playing a basketball game. You got to have a good attitude, go in there, you lose. You know, and if you don't feel good about tearing it down, man, I don't know. So I mean, I just, that's my concern. I...
Mr. Bottom.
And not most buildings are like this.
As he discussed it with you, so...
Bill, we actually looked at the building and he had the same concerns that he was talking about. I mean, he, he has a skill, he can clean that up pretty quick. I don't know, he was pretty shaky about tearing it down, but he said he could do it. He would have to have the time and take his time to do it correctly, but he felt comfortable about getting it cleaned up.
Who's responsible if he's cleaning it up and something happens?
I'm sure it's in the city.
Beg your pardon?
The city would be responsible.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, so...
But you are talking about doubling, more than doubling the existing amount, so...
Also rebuilding.
Of course it'll be double.
We do carry insurance, if we had...
On the agenda right now, it's more than double.
Right.
But you also remember that the 12-3 does not include cleaning the mess up and there's going to be a lot of dumpsters and there's going to be a lot of hauling or something to get rid of the stuff.
I, I was under the impression of that when, to get the 12-3 passed, it was, talked about how some, someone was in line to separate and then the county went in.
We talked about trying to get community corrections to separate some of the brick We talked about trying to get handy corrections to separate some of the brick that we could haul to the county and do it as cheap as we could. But then, we're talking about some time. It'll probably take a month, two months to get it done. You know, I don't know if, if, how quick they can work, or what the weather's gonna be, but we'll try if that's what you want us to do.
Well, I, I think it's a waste of time myself, but, I mean, I think it's one of those projects you get on and you want to get her done, no matter, get her done, no matter how, who does it, you know, you want to get it started and get it finished. Like I said, my only concern is, is our guy tearing it down now, hauling it off if, if, if it costs us the same as it costs somebody else, I just, I think it's foolish for us to do it if somebody else, if it costs the same or relatively the same. I mean, that's my only concern, I mean.
It's not gonna cost exactly the same, because the people are gonna want to make money on the end. We're already paying our fellows to do, to do the work, so it's gonna be, we're gonna save money there. Somebody's gonna do something and not make money.
So Gabe, you're talk, you're saying spend the twelve-three and put it on the ground and we clean it up?
No, 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 I'm saying we tear it down ourselves with about six, and then we haul it away ourselves. This is a, this is a growing problem, and if we just keep putting Band-Aids on it by hiring these contractors out at excessive rates, and we, and we're not training our people to do this with projects such as this, then they're never gonna have the experience to do that, and then five years from now, oh, there's another two-story building that needs to be tore down, and no one's ever done that before.
Your honor, the city employee that you spoke with, he has experience. He worked for a company that did this before, didn't he?
He now works for Park Department. He does all of our maintenance, and all, and he's very capable at using his work. He's very close with, he can run a machine. He is very, he's very concerned about it.
Take him a week to bring it down, probably, or ten days?
I don't, I don't think it'd take him only a few days.
I think just a couple days, he just wants to make sure if he does do it, he can't stop at four o'clock quitting time. He may have to continue doing it.
Will he have to rent machinery to do this?
Yeah, we'll rent a machine, we have to rent a machine.
Yeah, it's gonna be about five thousand dollars, but it's a lot less than twelve. And I, I think we gotta be very cautious with the, with how much money we're spending here, 'cause thi- this is a growing problem.
So, on Nancy's motion, is there no second? Let's get, let's move forward. No second, right? Nobody wants to second Nancy's motion?
I'll second it, just see where it goes.
Okay. Now, we have a second on Nancy's motion. Nancy's motion is that we take that twenty-five-four bid totally cleaned up. That's it.
The twenty-five-four, the twenty-five?
Uh, I think the twenty-five-four is a better.
Oh, do you?
It's a better, it's a better.
Says twenty-five, yeah. I think that twenty-five-four included getting the.
It gets everything done.
Yeah. Right, ready for grass.
I'm gonna, I'm going to hold on that motion for just a minute. You understand what we're gonna vote on? If we do that, there's no point in passing pending ordinance thirty-one hundred. So, we'll take it first, if it fails, then we'll go to pending ordinance thirty-one hundred. Now, since we've kind of shifted gears, is there any more comment from the public?
Well, I don't know anything about, I know what I watched across the street from Lincoln Reedman's building burn. The brick went into the basement. Does this, does this building have a basement?
Yeah.
Yes.
And what, and what I watched them do was sort out the wood. Because if you put the wood in basement, as Bill, it's gonna rot, and then it's, it's gonna sink. If you put the brick in there and you tamp it down, then it stays pretty level. I mean, we've had, obviously, we've had problems at Canal House Park a lot with our hotels up in basement with some sinkholes and things. But, um, I think you're not gonna have as much brick to haul away as you think you are. I think it's depending on how big the basement is.
The basement's big, but we, we did look at that concern, picking the wood out of it. The building's huge, and it's brick, everything's brick inside, the walls, the outside walls, inside walls, so, yes, I know, we'll go in the basement, but I wouldn't say no more than half.
If I remember right, they said eighteen dumpsters to dump, get away, get rid of it. What we didn't need. Okay, on Nancy's motion, we have a motion on the floor to accept that bid, do it completely. We have a second. We're going to have, unless you want to continue to discuss it, we're gonna have a roll call vote on Nancy's motion. Okay. Go ahead, Nancy, roll call vote. This is complete job, get it done.
Councilman Rich?
No.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Shomel?
No.
Councilman Nobby?
No.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
No.
Councilman Creach?
No.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
We're yeah.
Five to two.
Five to two against, the motion fails. Pending ordinance thirty-one hundred, this is an ordinance to ask for, uh, do an additional appropriation of twelve-three to lay that building on Eighth Street on the ground and then to be cleaned up by the city. I've had a public hearing on it. The public has spoke, and ready for discussion on the council.
In the twelve-three, is whom?
Twelve-three would come from the Riverboat Fund.
No, I mean, he, he can demolish it.
We would either do it ourselves, or we'll have the twelve-three.
Oh, the twelve-three's the money there to do whatever we decide to do.
Whatever we decide to do.
It'll be done by someone, but.
Okay.
I agree with Gabe, I think city employee, I think we should do it.
If you pass the twelve-three, I will, as the head of this city, and Billy works for him, but he works for me, we will attempt to take it down, we'll rent a machine and we'll attempt to take it down.
If I may.
Yeah.
Gary, 'cause you were here last meeting.
Yeah.
What, what the, the council, it was a three-to-three tie on this last council meeting, and what we as a council, I guess, is saying is, we allocate twelve thousand three hundred dollars. I think the council's concern was to get the building down, 'cause there is gonna be costs for removal and so forth. They weren't sure on, on what it would exactly cost to rent a track hoe, so forth and so on, and it's, uh, I don't mean to be facetious, but it's not a council decision. You know, we're, we're here to allocate the funds or, uh, not allocate the funds for this. But I think we've kicked around this, this thing enough, and I think we need to vote on it, up or down. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the twelve-three?
I still think we ought to limit that to a smaller amount, but.
Well, we're not gonna spend any more we need to, Gabe, I never do. In fact, I usually spend less.
That's good.
You can ask the clerk treasurer here.
It will probably take all that by the time, even if we do it ourselves, by the time we have to get dumpsters. But if we can get it all done and get it cleaned up for that, that's.
I just want everybody to keep in mind the liability we're talking about here. That's a dangerous building, and to have our people take it down, I'm a hundred percent against that. I'm not gonna win, but I just want you to know there's liability involved.
And, and we, we need to be aware of that. Okay, uh, if you're ready, are you all ready? We have, uh, has anyone made a motion to accept pending ordinance thirty-one hundred? I don't think I've got one yet.
Make the motion.
Okay, we got a motion over here, is there a second? Is there a second on the motion?
This is to appropriate twelve thousand three hundred dollars.
And then the borderworks has to figure out how to get it down, and all we're responsible to do is to get it down on the ground, but we'll try to get it down and cleaned up. I'll, I'll go after renting a machine and try to do it, if that's what you guys want to do.
Hopefully this will take care of.
I'm not saying it'll do at all, but we'll certainly try.
But this may take care of cleaning it up.
Yeah. We'll try.
And this eliminates the person that submitted a bid for twelve-three. It's like, the twelve-three came from somebody, didn't it?
Right, we have a bid for twelve-three laid on the ground.
For laid on the ground only. But this is not what we're going to do with this.
Well, we have, as Tom says, it's not the council's decision. You either appropriate the money for this building, or you don't appropriate the money. It's the borderworks' decision how to take it down.
Yeah, Frank, my, my understanding was at last council meeting, like I said, I voted against it all, but the mayor's concern was, was to get the, get the building a pile of rubble, if you have to get a fence around it.
Right, I remember.
But, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's not dangerous to the neighbors? That's what the neighbors would tell us. Or kids playing there, or kids walking by. So what we would do is, uh, like I say, I think that I understand what the council really wants to do. I understand, and we'll try to rent a machine and we'll try to do it and see where we go. If you appropriate.
Yeah, all we're doing is appropriating the money for what, however it's done.
And we may come back and say, hey, it didn't, it didn't work, we need another eight thousand dollars to build it up.
Because it isn't like, um, again, I will be voting no, but if I may, it, it isn't like, uh, that our employees haven't done this type of work before.
This employee has.
If the, if, well, what I'm, what I'm saying is, your honor, i- if, if you have the individual that has the expertise with, with the track hoe, it's gonna take probably a couple of days to knock it down, push it in. Then the other part is using a track hoe or a backhoe, loading it in dumpsters.
That's no problem.
That's my point.
The, the whole problem here with this is, the east wall is bowed here. If you go to take this off and pull it in, he's afraid this is gonna kick out onto that house. That's what he's afraid of. We're all afraid of that. Every contractor we've had looked at it, because it's, it's, it's falling like this. And that's what every, and that air conditioner sits right down there. So we'll get our insurance man over there, we'll get our man, we'll try to rent a backhoe. We'll do it, we might learn something, be able to do more.
Well, that's why I, I agree with, with Gabe, as he, when they discussed about our liability insurance. And this happened to me ten years ago, done the work. I backed into a guy's pickup truck and got about four thousand dollars damaged. We have liability insurance for that. I, I think if we, if, if the council does vote this way, to, uh, exercise our options with our employees, if that can be done, I mean, to save money.
Tom, are you against taking it down at all?
I'm against spending the money.
That's what I meant, you're against spending the money.
Yeah, that's just me.
That, that's all I meant.
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
Yes, you said something about we'd spend the twelve-three to tear it down, and then you said it'd probably take eight thousand more to clean it up.
I'm saying it, it could, I don't know.
Well, then that'd be over twenty thousand.
I know, but it, it, we might get it done, for like Gabe says, we might get it done for the whole twelve. I don't know, because I don't know what it costs to rent the trackhoe. We had some prices, uh, we should be able to rent one for three or four thousand dollars and have it brought in. The employee works for us regular, so he's being paid, and then the employees work for us, and we have trucks, so we should be able to do it, but I don't, you know, if, if I come back to you in a month and say, hey, it didn't work, we'll be responsible, we're trying something we've never tried before.
I feel like we're writing a blank check, though. I mean, we've done this before, we've talked about it, and we're, now we're living around, we're redoing it.
You're giving us twelve thousand three hundred dollars to rent a trackhoe and to try to take this thing down, that everybody else in the country says it's gonna be twenty-five thousand. I think we're doing a good job if we get it done.
And then you're saying that the borderworks is the ones that actually put it into place, but we're actually, I, I just feel like it ought to be flip-flopped.
Well, that's not the way the government.
They work that way. We allocate the funds and.
First.
Borderwork, they, they make that decision, whom they're going to hire and wait. We're gonna say, or the council would say, here's twelve thousand three hundred dollars, or whatever it may be, knock yourself out, go for it.
Won't they know before they start whether or not they can do it for that? They're gonna know what it costs to rent the, rent the equipment.
Well, we're gonna know the cost of equipment, and we know the people work for us, but we don't know what it's gonna cost to clean it up. Nobody's ever gonna know that until we do it.
The dumpsters isn't cheap.
You know, when you dig a hole, do you ever figure so much dirt come out of one little hole?
Well, if, if I could do it, like Gabe said, I mean, that's fine, I just.
We have a motion on the floor, I think we've discussed it till the end. Uh, I'm gonna call for a roll call vote on pending ordinance thirty-one hundred.
Was there a second, your honor?
Appropriating twelve thousand three hundred dollars toward the demolition. We have a second, didn't we?
No, we didn't.
Didn't we have a second? I thought Fran did, I'm sorry.
No, I didn't, but I will.
Who made the motion?
I did.
Gary? And Fran second. Okay, now we have a motion and a second on pending ordinance thirty-one hundred. Roll call vote.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creach?
No.
Councilwoman Stevens?
No.
Councilwoman Rich?
No.
Favor or against?
Favor.
Motion carries. We have an ordinance, so it requires now that we either suspend the rules or wait till next time you want to have a motion to suspend rules?
Certainly.
Second.
A motion to suspend the rules and consider pending ordinance thirty-one hundred on third and final reading. On suspension of rules, only, all in favor, say aye. Is there anybody opposed? None being opposed, we can move forward. On third and final reading, is there a motion to consider pending ordinance thirty-one hundred on third and final reading?
Slow move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to consider pending ordinance thirty-one hundred on third and final reading, a roll call vote.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creach?
No.
Councilwoman Stevens?
No.
Councilwoman Rich?
No.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
We're still four to three in favor. Motion passes, you pass pending ordinance thirty-one hundred, and, uh, see where we can go with it. Old business. Anybody have any old business they want to bring up?
I actually have some old business.
Go ahead.
Um, I, I didn't really say anything to last thing, it was brought up, um, when we were talking about the urban enterprise zone, and I looked back in my notes, I couldn't find anything that helped me understand this, but, um, there was some discussion and some explanation, and something was mentioned about giving the, um, the description of what the urban enterprise thing does, and it was made mention that there was ten thousand dollars that was given to the, um, building over at Industrial Ballpark?
Yes.
Is that right? But I don't remember, I mean, we appropriated money for that, but did we know that going into that?
We didn't have enough money to complete the job, and they helped us. It was a twenty-three thousand dollar project, right?
Yeah, I think we appropriated fourteen thousand.
Oh, okay.
They gave us ten and we completed the project. It's a beautiful place, it's a concession stand, restrooms, and a storage where we keep our ball equipment, have you seen it over there?
Yeah, I have. And then another thing was mentioned about table and chairs, that they did for something?
Okay, table and chairs, we traded a fire truck, and the ordinance said that we had to receive something for that fire truck, and, uh, we received tables and chairs.
That didn't have anything to do with the urban enterprise.
Right, right, yeah, I, I realize that, yeah. Okay. Okay.
And they also gave us free training with that.
Okay.
And the urban enterprise zone is, there's a district in town, if you live in that, you get a benefit, if you live and work in it, you get an income tax benefit.
Right. Where, what was the table and chairs, what did that amount to?
I can't tell you.
Where'd they go?
I can tell you down the road, but I can't remember.
Oh, huh?
They were going to the park.
Have they arrived yet?
No, so what?
There are gonna be new chairs and tables, so, now.
But that's different than the ones that we just bought you, though, right?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's visual.
Any other old business?
Anybody? John, where are we at with that, uh, the railroad track up there?
I don't know more than what the mayor has told me regarding.
I went over and talked to her about, just before Christmas, and she said they're working on it, and I told her, as you told me, if it's a money problem, we would appropriate more money. She said it's not a money problem, it's a time problem. I guess, must be a lot of research to it, is that what the answer is?
Quite a bit, yeah. It, it's much more difficult than you might think.
We also have put a, uh, a, uh, plan together and asked Indoc for money to help us put that sidewalk up there. There's three projects that Diana's going to Indianapolis tomorrow. One is the sidewalk to Walmart, help me, wanna save rocks to school, and the other one is a sewer project for Twenty-Fourth Street in areas. We're asking for all three of those projects from Indoc. This is the, uh, the fall draw, there'll be a call for projects for spring, too, and the county has asked for a project which will be considered tomorrow, too. It's bridge number twenty-five or twenty-two or something like that.
Mayor, is, is Indoc aware of the issue of people walking to Walmart?
Yes, they're much aware.
What, what do you, what's your gut feeling on that?
I don't know.
Crap shoot?
I don't know. We have provided for an easement to put the sidewalk on. We've asked for it to be a project and asked for money to do it. I don't know.
What's the cost gonna be on that? Do we have an idea?[1549.92]
You guys are really testing my brain tonight.
I don't know that I've ever heard of it.
There'll be a bunch.
I knew it one time, but I don't know.
From like Thirty-Fifth?
From Thirty-seventh.
That's what I meant, I meant Thirty-seventh, yeah, okay.
And those are eighty, twenty, ninety, so.
Oh, yeah, basically. In fact, you've already approved the match when we asked for those projects. Miscellaneous business, Nancy?
No.
Tom?
Want to do, besides the Colts winning Sunday. Help me out on this, if you would.
They won on Saturday.
Last week.
Yeah, oh, they're gonna win this Sunday, for sure?
No, this Saturday they're gonna play.
All in favor of them winning this Saturday?
If you would, on this, help me out on the C E C building, what, what happened?
I'm gonna give you a full report here.
Okay, all right, that's good. I'm good.
Debbie?
I've got a couple of questions. One is on the hiring, it was auto, is that getting anywhere close?
Yes, it's doing well. I had a meeting yesterday with was auto, and everything is well, in fact, I'm meeting with them again tomorrow for lunch.
I've had several calls, people that went in.
They have a, they have a H R person in place at this plant, they have four or five other people in place at this plant, and I believe, I'm telling you right, nine people in Minnesota training to be the head muckly mucks. Jesse Isaacs will be the plant manager. I don't know Jesse Isaacs, I was just told that yesterday, and it's not private, so I can tell you whoever he is will be the plant manager here. He's being trained and will be back here. They have moved producing product back probably the last weekend, February. They hope to produce in January, but the weather didn't help a lot. Have you noticed a lot of the demolition's being done around the outside of the building? All the demolition inside the building's done, they have washed the walls down in there, and the process is painting the walls. They have the heat system working inside the office building, they have the heat system working in from H North, and those of you who worked at Visteon know H North is operating.
My second thing was, was there any shelter anywhere in town available during this cold that we had?
It would be up to Adrian Ellis, and I think a shelter would have been established at the schools or churches. We have provisions, we have emergency plans in place, right?
I just hadn't heard anything about it, and I know that there could have been people with furnaces out and...
I imagined if that was the case, if the emergency would have been declared and things would have been unfolding and happening, but I, we were very fortunate, we didn't lose any electricity, and that's the whole key right there, so.
We were lucky.
I imagine if we'd lost electricity, then there would have been some emergency set-up shelters, and we have several of them in the disaster plans from the county where they would be a staff.
We had an emergency, when the rain came and flooded the ballpark, our police chief handed up a crew of volunteers and we sandbagged two houses?
Two houses and a business.
And a restaurant on each side, and kept the water from going in any of those houses or the restaurant. They did that, and they did that without a cost. Well, we had a little overtime at the city because the city hauled the sand.
Yeah, I had, we called some city street department people in, and we had the fire department, was on duty, came over, then the volunteer fire department sent some people in, and then the community people in the neighborhood just started coming in, and they were basically given some jobs, and they were jumping in there, women, men, kids.
And nobody got water in their house or the restaurant, right?
No, not, not except for sea beach water, so some of them houses wanted to have some sea beach water, but no, there wasn't no water from, coming in from current, so to speak. So, we held back a lot. The one house over on Howard Street, I had a sub pump going, and, but he was having a lot of water, it's coming up from under the ground because it's in a, kinda close to the flood plain over there and stuff, so.
We have pictures of all of that, and we, I really appreciate the chief headed that up, I think it was on Sunday night, wasn't it?
Yeah, I have past experience now.
Thank you.
You have anything, Jane? Graham?
No, I have nothing.
I don't have a thing.
Connie?
Nope.
Okay, getting back to, what was your question you asked me?
I was regarding to C E C building.
Okay, what happened was, we were right at the end of the year, and I had to go to Indianapolis to the doctor, and I went to the doctor, and Mr. Baker called me, and he said we are in an emergency, C E C is dissolved, the nicest day of the year, we were just a day or two before Christmas, and he and I discussed what we could do to save those hundred jobs in the old Fifth Third Bank, known as Issues and Answers. And he and I discussed, and we decided that we would call Economic Development to see if they would help us maybe take the building, because once C E C went out of business at the end of the year, there was nobody to care the insurance, there was nobody to pay the lights, the heat, the water, the sewer, and we didn't wanna lose the hundred and twenty jobs, nor did we wanna lose our studio upstairs. So he called the, if I'm not telling it right, you jump in here, John.
I will.
He called the Economic Development Group, because I was out of town, I called him back in the afternoon, and the Economic Development Group indicated to him they did not wanna call a meeting, they had discussed it, and they had made a decision, they weren't taking the building unless they could transfer it to somebody else within the same day, within two days. Right?
Well, they later decided that they would try to call a meeting, but they weren't able to get a quorum, I think was probably what happened. A meeting never happened.
So we were in an emergency situation, we knew we couldn't lose the hundred and twenty jobs over there, we knew we couldn't lose our studio, we knew we had to keep things going, so we called the Redevelopment Commission, they met at least two and a half hours and wrangled with the thing, and Mr. Baker arranged for them, and they took title to the building the last days of the year, what, within two days of the last day?
It was actually Friday before New Year's. Well, I'll be thinking about it. It'd be very close to the last of the year, yeah.
They took title, and Mr. Milwaukee's the president of that Redevelopment Board, he arranged and got the utilities in the redevelopment's name. You must remember the Redevelopment Board has no money whatsoever, zero money. We hurried up and got a memorandum of understanding down to Mr. McGinnis, who owns Issues and Answers, he was very willing and excited to work with us. Today we had a meeting, and we talked with the State Board of Accounts, the Redevelopment Commission will now start receiving the rent on that building, and they will be handling that on behalf of the city. Is it a good deal? No, it's not a good deal, but is there anybody in this room who wanted to vote to send the hundred and twenty jobs away, or give up a place to put our equipment, would have cost us, John, fifty thousand to move someplace?
At least.
Fifty? And we tried every place, we tried across the street, we tried here, there, and the cable with the fiber has to go from here to there. So the Redevelopment Board made that decision, and I commend them for making a very brave decision to keep the jobs, to keep them. We figured today, in fact, I thought you would ask me, so I brought the figures, that building generates about seventy-seven thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars a year, which that money will go to the Redevelopment Commission, and they will try to make the building and pay the utilities with that seventy-seven thousand dollars.
My question, well, twofold, your honor. Number one, I understand what took place, and it's a good idea, okay, but with that, my understanding, when the Redevelopment Commission strapped the city with another piece of property, that was supposed to be with council's approval. Am I not, am I not correct?
No, they have the power to take it.
My understanding was the council was supposed to be involved.
Mr. Baker?
The statute doesn't require that. I inquired of some folks that do this quite often up in Indianapolis, and they said the Redevelopment Commission has the authority by statute to take title to real estate without any further action by any governmental body.
But this is, this is my problem, John, I'm not arguing with you. I don't like the City of Connersville being in the real estate business. Now, we've got another property, like that white elephant up on Western Avenue that we used to call Visteon, that we gotta pay, God knows, on upkeep and maintenance, we have a train station that we owe, that was another expense, and I just don't like the city getting into the real estate business. Would Issues and Answers take the building?
We would, and I can't say we, because I'm not on the Economic, or the Redevelopment Board.
Well, I think Tom's raising some of the same questions that the Redevelopment Commission members had, because they were really wrestling with this. We met for two and a half to three hours.
And they sweat over this, but what else did they do?
Undoubtedly, I understand you, and I guess I think the decision was mine.
Well, the problem was, they weighed their options, and they realized, in effect, there were no other options, because there was no other C three corporation accident that would be willing to take the title to the real estate, and the law requires that it must go to a C three corporation or a governmental entity on dissolution of a C three corp, which C E C is. So it got down to the point of either the Redevelopment Commission take the property or it go into limbo, but with no leases being honored, they would not be honored, the utilities would not be paid, and jobs would be lost. Mr. McGinnis would have no choice but to move his business elsewhere. So that was...
We even tried to find another place we could just, we could move Mr. McGinnis. We could not find a place big enough that we could move him, and he started looking in different towns, and we didn't wanna lose those jobs. This year it's gonna be, how many jobs did he say this in two thousand fourteen?
Well, it was a hundred and twenty plus, is my recollection, it may have been more, I'm not sure.
And I, like I said, I understand that, if you're one of those hundred people that are employed there, I understand it, it's just my standpoint as a council person, I just, I think we need to get out of the real estate business.
I'll tell you my opinion, I shouldn't tell you on TV.
Tell me anyway.
I'll tell you right here in front of God and everybody.
Tell me anyway.
The Economic Development Group should have taken that building, that's their business, protecting those jobs was their business, they should have taken it. They did not wanna take it, they had money, they could have done something with it. Now the Redevelopment Commission has got it, before we go from here, I don't know.
Well, bottom line, does, do we know the figures on the upkeep and the utilities?
Yes, the utilities are forty thousand a year.
What insurance?
So the rent, well, what else?
Yeah, that's figuring insurance.
Does it pay for itself, then?
It, I just told you, it takes in, it will take in next year seventy-seven thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars, if everything works right. Takes forty to not keep it operating, the rest you'll have for upkeep.
Well, I could say, a tough decision was made, and I commend those people, but I just have an issue with it.
It didn't come easy, Tom.
Oh, undoubtedly.
They sweat and wrestled, and they didn't know what to do, and it was eight, nine o'clock at night, and they finally had to vote to do it, and you've got some people on there that, they really wrestled with it, I'm telling you. I was there, I watched the meeting, it was something.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the Redevelopment Board? We have had some tremendous salt mills, of course, because we've been using salt, they're out there right now probably spreading salt and plowing, so we can look for some heavy overtime. It's been pretty rough six weeks in the state department, and I think they've done a pretty good job with what we got to work with. Have you had any complaints?
I haven't.
No, I haven't.
I haven't.
I was cold one day, but...
You were cold?
Well, except for Dave being colder one day.
This one was cold.
We hate that.
On the good side, everything up at, why is that, is going good, it's on track, they're hiring people, and people are getting jobs, and that's going good, so we gotta be thankful what we do have. We're still working with the people that are gonna do the organic growing, that's a sure thing. I think the survey is what's holding us up right now, isn't it?
That's it, that's all we're waiting for is the survey.
We get the survey, we're ready to go, of course, you can't start growing in this kind of area, but that'll be moving along about February or March. We're working on another big project that's gonna create about two hundred jobs, I've been assured by the state that it's gonna fly, so we should be announcing that this spring. Good jobs. We had a good Christmas, everybody liked the Christmas lights, things were pretty good. I would like for at each meeting for the next two years, when we get to this part of the meeting, I'd like to have good of the order, and I'd like each one of you council people to think of something positive in this city that we represent, that you might say, even if it's something simple like, we got nice flags, the grass is pretty in front of the courthouse, but I want, I'm gonna, I won't put you on the spot tonight, but each time we meet, I'm gonna ask you under good of the order to say something positive, so maybe we can kinda get a positive thing going as we have our meetings. Public forum, how about you folks out there, you got anything positive to say tonight?
I've got something to say.
Come up to the podium and say it.
Well, I don't know if you guys talked about this before, but I just heard you say you have too many pieces of property, and as president of Historic Connersville, I don't know if you're aware of this, but we leased the hosehouse to you folks for ninety-nine years for a dollar, and our lease is about halfway up, and within the last year, or a year and a half, we've probably put seven thousand dollars into a new roof, and we restored the inside this past summer for the bicentennial. I would invite you to give us that building if you'd like to relieve yourselves of another piece of property. My hope would be that we could put that on the National Register of Historic Places. If you haven't been over there to look at it, I wish you'd go.
What building, Donna?
It's the little, it's the hosehouse. It's one of the three original firehouses in Connersville, it's between Western and Grand on Seventh, and right next to the dentist's office. You only own, I think, within two feet of the building, but we did extensive work on it, we put new windows in it, it's pretty much, can't be burglarized now, the windows are very strong, the, it just looks really, really nice, and we kept flowers around it all summer, and the dentist's office was very nice to help us water our flowers and all that. So I'm just saying, if, you know, if you wanna relieve yourselves of a property, we've been paying the insurance on it, you know, and I realize there's still fifty cents left on our lease, but, you know.
You wouldn't consider taking the old Visteon bank, would you?
Huh?
What did I say, the Visteon?
No, we don't want the old bank, that's a little, it's a little more than we can handle, but...
It's historic.
It is, I'm sure, and it's lovely, but we wouldn't wanna infringe on you at all, that would be asking too much. So just something for you guys to think about, thank you.
Is that something you all wanna pursue?
I like that idea.
Do you like the idea?
Mm-hmm.
I'm going to appoint you a committee of one to see how we get it done.
John, how we get it done?
Well, first of all, we need to get a legal description of the real estate that's occupying, and I presume it's a lot in a flat, and do you happen to have that, Donna?
Not with me.
Well, I mean, in your archives?
I think we do, yeah.
Yeah, if you could get that to me, I could work with that.
How are we gonna make up for the income loss?
So if I could get the legal description, it's just a matter of going through the world of steps.
I can record shows, and next meeting Gabe will announce how we're gonna make that happen.
John's gonna figure it out for us.
I will. But your corporation is a C three corporation, isn't it? So that makes it a lot simpler, as far as what the city is.
Would you like to have the train station, too?
I don't know which train station you own. The depot.
The depot.
The depot.
Oh, you mean the new one?
The little depot.
No, the big depot.
No, no.
The, the White River Valley depot.
Yeah, do you own that?
It's the City of Connersville's depot, it's leased to the railroad for...
Ninety-nine years.
Ninety-nine years.
For a dollar?
Yeah.
So we could buy them out for the right price?
You could have that.
Probably two dollars.
I didn't know I could own that, too, gosh, this is just like Connersville awfully.
Shame, isn't it?
I don't wanna buy a railroad.
Make a good deal.
Anything else under public forum? Rex, you come every week, have you got anything you want to tell us?
No, not really, I'd like the city department, the street department did a fantastic job there.
There you are.
I gotta compliment those guys, they worked their tails off.
And it's tough, I'll tell you, it's not easy.
All right.
Fire chief, or first aid unit operator, you got anything other than, since you've got those whiskers, I can't remember who you are. It's just still you. Mike, did you have anything tonight?
No.
I don't know if all the council knows, we're in the process of trying to reline the inside of the pavilion, put that white stuff to get rid of the birds, the lines goes bopping in there for us, and we're using our own people, and we're in the process, but the weather hasn't been too cooperative. But we're trying. Fran, did you have anything?
No, but you mentioned organic growing, I think it's the first time you've named that publicly, could you elaborate on what, what that is at this point?
Um, I have a company that has purchased a piece of land from the Economic Development Group, it belongs to Economic Development, and they're going to do organic growing in cabbage, lettuce, one more, what's the other one, John?
Oh, spinach perhaps, or some other green.
They have a contract with the Myers and Meyer store.
Clover, yeah.
Clover and Meyer, and they're gonna be growing that here, they're gonna put up about fifty small greenhouses and...
Year round.
Gonna grow year round when they get going, and we got that all taken care of in the fall, but then we had to get the survey in, we had to get the land, and...
No new jobs?
But that company, their CEO even, has looked at homes to move here. How many jobs was it, John?
My recollection is, so many of these things going on, I can't keep them straight, but I think it was a hundred jobs.
A hundred jobs, yeah.
Will pay?
Will? I don't know what they pay, I would say average.
They're also going to eventually grow fish and use the fish droppings to fertilize the organic food. Yeah, it's, it's a done deal, I think, in fact, he's been here numerous, numerous times, I've had lunch with him.
We've got the title worked down, and we're working on it, the survey's the only thing that's going, it's a good pitch for the closing.
We're diversified.
That is diversified.
We're not gonna just make auto parts, we're gonna make cabins, we're gonna raise... Connie, did you have anything? John, did you have anything else that you want to tell the council, Don?
No.
Okay. You were at that meeting.
Which one?
With the Redevelopment Commission and...
Oh, yes, yes.
We have good people on there, and they, Tom Beck is one of the members on there, and Tom is a good businessman, and he wrestled and wrestled, and I remember his statement, I think, what choice do we have but to keep those jobs here? What would the public think if we said, hey, they're not important, we're just gonna let it go? And remember, we have that six-story building, oh, that is in limbo, nobody owns it at this point, it's just that, and C E C owned it, and they're out of business. Who owns it, John?
Well, it's, it's still owned by C E C, they're in the process of wrapping up their dissolution of their corporation, which the statute gives them a reasonable period of time to do that, but they so far haven't found another C three corporation that's willing to take it. I think they have some angles they're working on, but so far, nothing's happened, as far as I know.
So it probably has no insurance, it has no anything? So it probably has no insurance, it has no anything?
That's my assumption, yeah.
So does the city have any liability if someone gets hurt over there?
No, it's not the city's property.
Take a motion to adjourn if you're all. So remember, next meeting and all the rest of the meetings until I leave, I'd like for you to say something good about the city each time you meet. I don't have, I need a motion. Have a motion on the floor to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. If not, motion carried.